And I will start with an announcement. Alan sent email to Patrick and me last night saying that he wasn't going to be able to meet this, meet with us today, and that he would be resigning from the board at the end of the month for family reasons. So, what I would like you to have sort of in the back of your mind is if you can think of anyone we might like to consider replacing him through the remainder of his term when it really expires this spring. I don't think we are obligated to fill the position, especially since it's really less than six months, but on the other hand, if there were someone, anyone thought would be a good candidate, then it would certainly be nice to bring the person onboard sooner rather than later. If things went well, one might hope that they would maybe stand for election without much competition or anyway. If there is a good and qualified candidate, I would certainly like the board to consider it. If not, I think we will go along our merry way and hope that we think of someone or someone crawls out of the woodwork. I have a couple of ideas, but what I would like to do is maybe come back to this at the very end of the meeting.
Yeah. Give us something. Well, nomination papers you can take, start.
We don't need that if we are going to fill the position in a temporary way. We just need to make a recommendation to the selectmen who would need to vote in favor of the replacement.
Who else is up for reelection? The two, are you running again?
It was Alan.
Alan. Do you know, are you planning on running again? I'm just trying to get an overall picture of what we might base.
Let's deal with this at the end and move along for now. Thank you.
That gives you time to think.
Gives you time to think. No pressure.
Okay, first item on the agenda, vote on the minutes of November 8th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second?
I was also going to vote, but I don't know if I can because I took the minutes.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Are there any corrections or edits or changes? All in favor, please say so. Yep. And do we have an abstention for the absent person?
Yep.
I think that makes perfect sense. We do not have any public to comment today, but I will take this opportunity to ask you to briefly summarize the Kathleen Carina correspondence.
Sure. I feel like I talked about this before, but maybe I didn't. Just hold on. So this was the woman who wanted us to have like a demonstration drought garden, the one who sent the letter to Patrick saying, you know, can you please put in some drought plants and, you know, consider, you know, educating the public about them. And we had discussed that at the last meeting and we had agreed that it sounded like a good opportunity for the entire public, not just for us. So I wrote to her, thanked her for her interest and invited her to come give a talk. Here to the public, I said, you know, I think this would be of broader interest than, you know, just for the library trustees and the library. You know, usually talks are, you know, our best slants are Saturday morning. We also have Wednesday evenings. Those would be your best opportunity to draw a big crowd. And if you, because she was waiting to hear something back from the Arbor Foundation, I said, if you have stuff from the Arbor Foundation, you know, materials, you could bring that, we could, you know, set it up, whatever. So she wrote back, I'm too busy right now. I really just want you to basically like create a, you know, create a demonstration garden. It was about the library and, you know, would you consider making a demonstration garden of drought resistant plants, et cetera. And so I wrote back, well, when your schedule frees up, we'd love to have you here, you know, to give the opportunity. And we did actually have a master plan for the, for the library, which included a sustainability subcommittee. And we did put in all native plants that, you know, did not require supplemental watering. So, and we haven't watered even throughout the drought, but like we, you know, nothing died except grass. And I did say, like, we have, that's not drought resistant here, it's grass at this point. So, you know, looking forward to hearing more from you when you become more available. And, you know, if you do get this information from the Arbor Day Foundation or have any other materials, you know, please let us know and we're happy to work with you to sort of set up a, you know, exhibit. And that was it. That was the last I heard. Could you say her name again? Kathleen Carina? I'll look at her. I'll shoot it to you. Just I'll find it. I know I saved the correspondence somewhere. I'm having some technical issues here, but.
Yep. I'm not in, I'm not online.
Okay, yeah, I'll go to you.
Are you not able to connect?
I tried, but I, I learned a while ago just to download all the documents that I need before I come in. So, and it's usually quicker anyway. It usually comes in at some point because I tend to show up.
See that line?
Stating my pants.
I get in, but then I, it sends me out. Takes me out.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Okay, moving on to the director of the board, Patrick.
Okay, so this was a fairly eventful and busy month. We are due to turn in our departmental budget on Friday, which is considerably earlier than it has been in the past. It's usually been towards the end of the month. So I was somewhat rushed to put this together. Has everybody looked at what I put forward? It's fairly self-explanatory, although you will see that the percentage change is slightly higher than it has been in recent years. There was a memo that I sent around that was from the town administrator and essentially her, her instruction to department heads was, she said, last year I recommended that we asked department heads to prepare budgets reflecting what their department's needs were to successfully and efficiently provide services to the residents of Hattie. Department heads presented trustworthy budgets and I would like to recommend that the select board allow me to take that same approach for FY24. And so I took that at face value and have, based on what I see as our needs, which include more available staff hours, have put that into the part-time library salaries line. So that has gone up by, from $97,000 and change to $107,000. And that $10,000 by and large will go towards expending the hours for the assistant director to be here full days on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Because she at this point comes in in the morning and leaves around 3:30, which leaves a gap at the end where if there's another absence, then, you know, like I'm happy to do it, but, you know, there may not be another staff person here other than myself. So that would help a little bit.
Are we looking at this FY staffing? This is the one we're looking at? FY staffing as the overall?
Yes, but did you also do this for a few?
Yeah. That one? Oh, yeah, that's one.
Yeah, so there, this is, the staffing explanation is just specific to, you know, to how much each individual staff person gets paid. There are, I don't think there are any other changes here.
What, I have a question though.
Yeah, there is one other change.
Okay.
Sorry, there's one other change, which is that, and this hasn't happened yet, but I have the budget for it. I don't have an official resignation from her, but Audra's is, is planning to step down from that position. She may stay on as a Saturday person, so she may still, still remain on the staff and, and be in our sub roster, but she will not be the YA person probably as of late January. So again, she has not put something on my desk, but she's been telegraphing that this is happening, which is very helpful because I needed to have that in the mix as I put this together. So, so that, that may be coming. So that also, that's an additional five hours that we wouldn't have been paying because that was part of her schedule. And we intend to fill the YA position as, you know, the same number of hours, 27 hours with benefits, which will help us to attract a wider pool of candidates than we've been able to in the past when it was only 15 or 16 hours with benefits. So, so that's, that's a good thing, even though we're sad to not have her in that position.
Did she say why she is thinking of leaving? Because I know she came to you and said she needed more hours and that's why we, you know, out of our own budget funded that and then went, you know, asked for the additional?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think anyone would have asked, made that same request. I think in the end she decided that, that YA librarianship was not where her future is. She's still interested in library work, but she is not necessarily loving the programming aspect of it. And I don't think this is the reason that we talked about it. We had our, you know, annual check-in conversation and, and so this was also part of the conversation because I knew that she was, you know, likely to leave. But we talked about a number of things and, you know, there have been a lot of challenges with YA where there have been some, I don't know what you call them, you know, behavioral issues. So there's been a lot more maybe stress involved. I personally, I don't want to minimize it, but I don't, I don't think that we're, you know, you know, I don't think we're, things were running out of control, but I can see why it could lead to someone feeling a little bit burned out and just make them question, like, is this really what I want to be doing? I think it's a great experience. I think she really inhabited the role of, you know, the youth services coordinator, but she just has decided her destiny lies elsewhere. So I get that. So, yeah, so whenever she makes that official, we'll be putting that out to, to attract candidates and hopefully there won't be like a huge gap. But thankfully we have that sub budget that's been approved to, to use, we make funding for, and that will help us to get through that patch of however many weeks we, you know, we're a down person. So I'm glad that we have that in place to, to help us out. And we were, we're also starting to have some of the subs come in and get oriented so that when we do have to ask them to literally substitute, that they'll know what's, what in the paper will, will all be taken care of and.
How many subs do you have?
At this point, we have three on the roster and with Audra's we'd have four. So it's, it's, yeah, it's very good.
And are you allowed to post for that position or not until this one is officially vacant? Like, can you minimize that gap by posting now?
We could, but I, again, until someone puts a piece of paper in front of me, I don't want to do something, I don't want them to feel that they can't undo something that they've said. I think it was quite admirable to come and just be very transparent about it so that it wasn't, you know, that we weren't blindsided by it. And, you know, two weeks, you know, goodbye. So I appreciated that. I just would like for her to actually sign her name to it and say, this is what I'm doing. And then it's official and then we can send it out, you know, the next day if we need it. So otherwise the budget is fairly, there's really nothing to see here. We're still sort of kind of bumping along with minimum amounts for other lines because we have sort of transferred that emphasis to personnel and are using, you know, we have those other resources likely to carry us through when we need supplies or, you know, unexpected computer maintenance or what have you. One thing I will mention about this, it's in the, down in the report here, but we are moving over to a contract with CW Mars for IT support, the fellow that we've been working with for a long time, who was a staff person at the Jones and came out, you know, pretty reliably. All of a sudden we found out that he had moved to Mashpee and was still available to do remote IT, you know, stuff. But the reality is that he has not been as available as he had been before and that's kind of left us in the lurch. So I, we were having some issues with the security software and Windows kind of clashing with each other and having a lot of computer issues and patron complaints coming at YA, you know, I can't print, I can't, computer's frozen. So, so we were just going to go with CW Mars because it's, it's their network, they know how this works. And I think the cost will be reasonable. So it's the cost that's here, 1325 reflects the annual cost for that, for that expense.
Can I go back to this budget? I had two questions on the budget.
Sure.
One was the, I wanted to ask a question about the email from Carolyn. Her last line said, I will present a suggested COLA increase to the select board after the finance team has the opportunity to review the second quarter revenues of FY23. Is she suggesting that after the second quarter of FY23, there would be, is this an additional COLA? Or is she saying, I'll come up with my COLA figure for FY24 once I've seen all of this others?
Yeah, so in the past, the way it's worked is they, and I don't know if this is better or worse, but in the past they have asked us, they've given us direction, you know, I guess coming from the finance committee and select board, they've said, please formulate your budgets as though they were level service or incorporate, you know, 2% COLA or whatever it's going to be into your figures, which was fine, but it kind of makes sense to just sort of like put this forward.
And let her do it.
And then they make, they make the choice to adjust it or not adjust it.
Okay.
We don't really get much say in it either way, so.
I was just, I just wondered if it was like a mid-year.
No.
Like due to inflation, it's a, okay.
Yeah, there's no, they're not telegraphing anything to us about like, are we going to do step increases, which they have not done step increases in, like literally years.
Yeah.
And I did actually, you know, say something to Carolyn about that in an email.
Yeah.
She wanted to come and sit in on a staff meeting and get to know the staff. And I said, that is, you know, that's really nice, you'd be welcome to do that. But I kind of pointed back to this and said, you know, what people really want is sort of action on, because I was talking about how we were doing our annual, you know, reviews and check-ins, but that these are not tied to compensation, et cetera. Reminding her that, you know, there really hasn't been a step increase for people. Because that's something that people, when I sit down with them, they're talking to me about like, you know, what's the town doing? And I have to say, I don't know what the town is doing. But I feel that I am obligated to advocate for them to do something about it because they're telling me that they want to raise.
I agree.
Which is very understandable.
Was, was there a COLA last year?
There was, but I don't remember what it was. It was probably, it was probably 1% or 2%, which maybe was, that, I mean, that's fairly normal for, at least in the time that I've been here, but when inflation is down a percent way.
Exactly. So that's why I wondered, because I remembered the 2% as well. And then when I read that, I was like, oh, well, maybe they're doing an additional.
Because I just looked up the COLA for the social security registration and it's like 8.9% or something for the coming year.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
It jumped, yeah.
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 Which makes sense, right, this year, so.
It's something that gets eaten up by the Medicare cost. It's not all just.
Sure, but with, with inflation where it's at, a 2% raise is a pay cut.
Which is why I read that note the way I did.
Yeah.
But then when you didn't mention it and I didn't see it in this budget line, that's when I wondered, was I just doing natural thinking? Apparently I was doing natural thinking, but that's okay. You know, so it's up to.
The other thing I'm wondering about in terms of staff salaries, since the minimum wage has gone up each year, is that some of the staff are, are now like actually pretty close to minimum wage.
Yeah.
And that's another place where wage increases are more than warranted. So, I mean, just to echo what you've already said, but.
Right, and this doesn't, this doesn't play into it. This isn't, I don't think any action will be taken on this in time for this budget year, but, but again, in having a conversation specifically with, with Sue when we had our check-in, you know, we were kind of talking about her situation. She was saying that she would like more hours, so I said, I, you know, I'll look into that, you know, relative to those days that she leaves early. And, and we were just sort of talking about the history of her position because she's been here longer than, than any of us. And when she started, she was, her job title was library assistant. And then a couple of years ago, when she went from part-time to, you know, benefited three-quarter time, we also changed the, the job title to assistant director. She was, you know, having more responsibilities and was, you know, just doing a lot more stuff. But what didn't happen along the increase, her salary, her hourly amount stayed the same. And it felt at the time like that might be a bridge too far to like ask them to at the same time reclassify the position. But I, in the meantime, a couple of years have gone by and based on our conversation, which was, you know, totally positive and, you know, good, but one of, one of the takeaways from that was that that really should be revisited. And so I sent an email to HR to say, here's the history of this position. I really would like to see if we can have it reclassified out of where it was because it's basically, you know, it's not a totally different job, but it's a job with greatly more responsibility than, than it was, you know, 10 years ago when, when she was under the different title. So, so we'll see how that goes, but I don't think anything will happen with that until, until next budget year. But I'm not sure.
So, have you run the ARIS salary numbers for the same title? I can, I'm happy to look at.
Yeah, and we probably should do that. It's hard to know though with the ARIS numbers. Yeah, because you don't know like if you're dealing with somebody that's been there for 10 years or if you're dealing with somebody else.
We don't, but at least it might give us more information.
Sure, yeah, and we can, we can write that down by, by, you know, the size of.
Yep, exactly. Well, I, I did that for hours when you were saying that you wanted to, you know, have a retreat and talk about all things. I had pulled all the ARIS numbers to look at all our, all the hours and I've done the comps, I have our, you know, our comp counts, et cetera. So I'm happy to do that, I will do that, you know, for hours.
We should look at that, that would be a good thing to do.
What is ARIS?
It's the statistical report that we complete for the Board of Collaborative Commissioners every year.
Okay, is it A-R-I-S?
Yes, and unfortunately I don't know what the acronym is, but.
Information Systems.
It's available on the MLC website.
But you're right, Jess, like if you look at the rates, let's pretend all of these positions were vacant. See how it says TBD under Youth Services Coordinator? What if they all said TBD? So we're now removing the individuals from the equation? And if you had to start out fresh from staff, you know, fresh, would you pay your Youth Services Coordinator less per hour than you would pay your Circulation Assistants? So that's where I see the biggest disparity. So per hour, that position, which presumably has more responsibilities, is making less, so.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I agree, but, but this is, this is an issue, again, related to the way the town does things, that you sort of just get stuck on the track.
So when you post, but this is an opportunity, right? When you post this new position, and I'm not saying that, so the line that is attached to Audra's Circulation Assistant, I'm not saying, oh, you should change that. I'm wondering if it's an opportunity to advertise the Youth Services Coordinator position, you know, at least at 16 per hour, like.
I would love to do that and the issue then becomes that the person who is occupying the Circulation Assistant position, who's been here for close to 10 years, says, why is that person starting at 16 and I'm at $16 after 10 years?
Well, you have to say to yourself again, if none of these people were here, if you had to replace every single one of these people, I'm not saying this is, I'm not saying that Karen is receiving the proper amount, but we don't have enough. The only way we can increase her salary or any of our existing staff salary is to try to get the town to work through the staff system, right? But we have a different opportunity with our new hire. And I'm just, you know, I would hate to continue to lose people if we don't have to. But I don't, like, I don't want to put it completely out of whack, like I'm not saying, oh, we should advertise that position at 25 an hour or whatever, but I think if you had to replace your Circulation Assistant, you probably would be able to hire them for minimum wage, but I don't know how attractive a Youth Services Coordinator at roughly minimum wage would be.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I understand what you're saying, although.
Because it's a different job.
It is a different, it is a different job.
I was going to say the same thing, but, but a part-time circulation does personally.
Yes, it is, this is true if you, if you consider it in a generic way, but we, we do, you know, rely on all these positions to do things that, that a lot of other libraries of our size would not do. So there's, there was a question that went around on one of the listservs, probably a Director's List serve talking about, does anyone, does anyone working in a library who does not have an MLS degree order materials for the library? And so you've had a number of libraries, you know, primarily larger ones, that said, no, no one without an MLS degree selects material for the library question.
Because they have a large staff.
Well, they have a large staff and they're also very hierarchical and fixed. Whereas we, because we're small, rely on, you know, the human resources that are inherent in our staff. So where we've had someone with a subject expertise and enthusiasm for it, they've gone and taken a lot of that on. So there is more to these positions than is just, than you would imagine just by reading that job title. And so, you know, the willingness of people to take on more than, I'm not going to do that, I'm a circulation system, why would I do that? You know, that's a common attitude in, you know, in low-wage work environments. And so we get a lot more out of our staff than one might expect to do. And that I think also leads to longer, you know, longevity with people staying because they enjoy their work, because it's very, they're not stuck in, you know, and they're not considered inferior to other staffs because of their credential and their job title or what have you. So, and this is kind of like one of the situations, it's unfortunately a little bit of a no-win situation. I do agree that it would be more attractive to advertise the position for, for more, but it does, it does introduce that issue with the existing staff of, you know, hey, what's going on? I've been here for 10 years, you know.
But that's a, that's a different problem that we can try to help work towards solving, right? So I don't want you just to continue to create the same problem again and again. You know, you've already come to us and said, Youth Services, it's a revolving door, here are some of the ways. So if we do have this opportunity, I just don't want us to squander it.
I also suspect, I mean, I just was at Target today and the sign on the front door says their rate starts at 1650, which is actually lower than it was over the summer, but that aside, it may be a necessity that that, that rate comes up. And then that may be part of what creates the groundswell for us to say, we need to increase across the board and probably not just at the library. Like I would imagine that there's other segments of the town that also need to be thinking about this.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all in support of the value that all, every single employee, you know, brings. And if they all left and you had to rehire, I'm sure they would be equally as valuable. But some of the problems we can't solve, I'm only trying to solve the one that we can, maybe, right? Like if you tell me you go to HR and they say, no, we refuse to post this at 1600, it's just going to be a direct replacement, I mean, $16, then there's nothing we can do, right? But I'm just tossing it out there. Incrementally, it's not a ton more to the, you know, overall budget, but it might feel a little better to apply for a job at $16 an hour.
I'm perfectly happy to revise that number and put it on that way. As you say, I don't think it increases the bottom line. We're going to have to justify this one way or the other and, you know, I don't think the difference is that, it's not going to change the final outcome when people evaluate this based on the need. Because again, we're going to go to the finance committee and select board and say, asking for this much more, $10,000 or $11,000, whatever, you know, a 10, whatever that is, a 10% increase, but here is the, here's the big pie chart of what we did in 2019, the last normal year of our operation versus, you know, 2022. And it's like this.
Yeah.
And we're doing X, Y, and Z that we didn't used to do before.
Right, and especially for this position, right? This position did not used to have to supervise a, you know, a room dedicated to this particular group of sometimes roundy individuals. So, I mean, it's, like, I feel like if any one of us got called on the carpet to say, what is this? Why are you asking for more money? I mean, technically it's a professional position, again, no insult on the Circulation Assistant, but it's just, like, that's to outside.
We don't require a degree, just to clarify.
You don't for the Youth Services?
We don't require a master's degree for that, no. Well, we never have because again, we were only able to offer a 15-hour position. The person who was in the position got boosted to 27 because we needed that open coverage, but she doesn't hold a degree. We can say that it's preferable, but again, you're advertising a job that pays $16 an hour. I'm looking more for someone with the right skillset and personality to, to. I'm looking more for, um, someone with the right skill set and personality to, to take on that, take on that group.
It's still more responsibility though than the Circulation Assistant.
Okay, we, we can agree to disagree on that, but it, but it's, it, it certainly depends on your mindset with that, because some people, um, find that work to be quite easy to, to work with teenagers and, and rewarding. I mean, this is not, this is not classroom work, this is kids coming in after school, so it's not tied to curriculum or anything like that, it's keeping people occupied and engaged and, um, so some people love doing it in the same way that, you know, living in the past has really enjoyed, you know, working with children and doing that kind of work, it's just what they, what they're kind of cut out to do. So that's kind of the hope, that we'll find somebody that, that, you know, this is fun work for them to do, it's like what they like to do.
One thing I might be inclined to suggest is, if it is possible, to say that there is a range of salary being offered or hourly rate depending on experience, because if you had someone who wasn't, I don't know, a social worker who was tired of doing social work, who might find that to be a different and related kind of challenge as opposed to someone who worked as a camp counselor?
Yeah.
I'm just pulling things out of the air, but if HR would allow a job description to be crafted so that there would be a range, that might be one way to address this.
So just, just, I don't know if anything's changed because we haven't hired anyone in a little while, but even, even in the, in the era of HR Directors at Town Hall, we've never actually gone through HR for our hiring. We have always hired, you know, plural listed our jobs through the Board of Library Commissioners page. I'll give it to HR, but, but generally speaking, we're looking for, you know, people that are, that are scanning.
Right.
Library, looking for libraries. But the visit doesn't have to be approved by.
I've never had to do that, I've never had to do that in the past, so we've just gone down there and we've never had a problem with it, and we've never been told to do it a different way, so.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Okay.
In that case, it seems like you can put anything on this sheet, right? It could be approved or rejected, right? Cause it's over for the final budget. I'm not suggesting you put something wild and crazy, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping if the, if the request is modest, that it will be approved as is, and I, I, you know, if they, if, if the town administrator's recommendation is, well, we'll give you half of what you asked, um, which if we ask for too much, that's what I imagine she'll do, and say, within your means, which, you know, is understandable, then we would have to make some hard choices. I'm trying to like thread, thread the needle with what I think we can realistically ask for without asking for too much, and then, but maybe that's the wrong approach, I don't know. I mean, that's, I've always been pretty cautious with how we approach this and have, you know, we've had modest asks, but this is a time, if there was ever a time, to be a little bit more, um, ambitious with what we, what we ask for, it would be now, because we have the numbers to back us up to just say like, look, you're asking people to do the same, for the same amount of, number of hours and the same pay, to do, you know, fifty percent more work, and it just eventually catches up, that you can't do, but it's unsustainable.
Yeah, I would argue this is a substantially different position now than was in the old days, so.
Yeah, I would ask if anybody else has any other thoughts afterward, if we could share them with Patrick and/or me, that would be useful, and let's see if we can move on.
Sure, did, I don't know, do you want to, as it stands, do you want to, in the past, there has usually been a vote to approve this budget by the trustees, do you, is that something that you want to do? I don't know if you are strictly required to do it, if that's what's always happened in the past.
I would to accept the budget with the increase, the discussed increase on the librarian salaries to reflect a sixteen dollar an hour rate for Youth Services Coordinator.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion?
Can I, I want to ask one question about the budget. I first, I understand the memo of understanding with CWRs for the IT support. My question is, what are you gonna do for the next six months? Or does that start now, or?
It starts now, um.
So this thirteen twenty-five is for like December one to December one?
I believe it starts, I believe it's, it goes into, it goes into effect January first, so yeah, it's half the year, and it may change next year, but if I know next year that it's going to be a different amount, uh, I should be able to budget for it ahead of time. So this is gonna take, this is gonna take, you're asking how are we gonna pay for the first half of that contract? We have existing money in IT that can be used for that, and if that is, if that comes up short, then I draw on Linn to, to pay the balance.
I was just trying to understand if this was six months or twelve months? And it is twelve months?
It's twelve months starting January first.
Okay.
So I need to withdraw my motion because I realized when I reviewed the salary again, that in here is your salary with no increase, and we need to discuss that first, set that, and then redo the entire, this staff line, all the staff line.
Yeah, that is true.
So let's, I'm gonna withdraw it and I will make another motion at the end of the meeting that will reflect the sixteen dollars for the one line and whatever the salary increases for the next line.
Good call, good catch.
Patrick, back to the.
Yeah, uh, Roof, Roof, uh, HVAC, we're going to have a meeting on Friday that Lynn and I will be at, and it's, it's mostly about the roof and kind of getting everyone speeding on the same page about what has been recommended by Phil as a, uh, a next step. But I'm glad we have the HVAC issue because Gary will be at that meeting, and he's the person who has the task with communicating with corporate about coming up with a potential solution if there is one for the noise on the, on the back path.
At what, at the, at our next meeting?
We're having a meeting on Friday.
Oh, okay.
With Lynn and I, Gary from Building Dynamics, Tom, Building Inspector, Carolyn and Jennifer, and we're gonna be talking about a number of things, and I'm going to just kind of bring this into the conversation because opportunistically Gary will be there and then Carolyn, I'm gonna bring Carolyn up to speed, that we had a complaint from a neighbor and it needs to be resolved. So I just wanted to mention that, because he did call, Mr. Vakula did call again and mentioned that he had heard the machinery come on at three in the morning on a cold night, and I said, okay, do what we can do. Roof warranty, um, so you all know that, that, that was rejected. In the meantime, once we had that information, I called Phil up and asked him and talked to Mark as well, and I said, okay, well, what are the potential solutions here? Is it gutters? And gutters could work, but they're, those are inherently problematic in that they require a lot of maintenance to keep clear, they're up on a high roof, et cetera, we'd have to have snow guards installed and all kinds of other stuff. So the next, uh, best solution that doesn't require additional maintenance would be to have a protective layer under the drip line, because in the warranty, um, the analysis of the manufacturer, they said all the damage that you are pointing to is under the drip line of the upper roof. So it's either one of two things, it's either the water coming off of the upper roof and the lower roof and then eroding the shingles beneath, or, this is Phil's theory, Phil does not believe that that's what's happening. Phil believes that what happened was at the time of construction, the general contractor did not put down appropriate, um, plywood or whatever, so that when the workers were on the roof doing, you know, installing the glass, what do you call it, glass reinforced concrete panels onto the wall, installing the clerestory windows, that their boots and, you know, working on the roof is what damaged it, and that is what the building sector is pointing to when they go up and look at the roof. So at this point, I don't know that there's any way to forensically prove this one way or the other, all I know is that they are not satisfied with the way the roof is, some people are saying that the roof is failing. Phil and Mark do not believe it's failing, they think it's been damaged in some way, and so, but in order to satisfy the, the needs of the, you know, folks that are concerned, one thing that could be done would be to put down a layer of flashing for that, essentially what's, for all intensive purposes, flashing, um, using metal roofing, either flat seam or standing seam metal in that, in the shadow of that drip line to protect it when water comes off. And from there, the solar will be able to be installed onto the normal shingle roof. So we're hoping that when we go to have this meeting on Friday, that, that, that proposal will be satisfactory, although we don't have a scope of work, we don't have a cost associated with that. And I did ask Phil if he had any idea what this might cost, and he was hesitant to say he didn't really know, he suggested that once we have a sketch from him, then we take it to roofers and get prices. So I have no idea if this is something that we would be able to just get quotes for, if we would have to go out to bid, because I just, I have no idea. But at least we're coming closer to a solution to be asked this, you know, this problem. We're also gonna talk on that meeting, I'm going to talk with Carolyn about, um, things related to our LEED certification, which at this point for my conversations with Phil and the person that oversees LEED for JRA, we're kind of on the, we're on the cusp. And if we're missing components like without solar, we're missing points, without the car charging station, we're missing points, um, we need to, this is not even a point thing, we have to provide a, um, collection receptacle for, uh, e-waste recycling, so we need to be able to collect like batteries and phones and stuff like that. However, there is no actual waste stream and happy for that kind of thing. And I spoke with the recycling coordinator, with the official recycling coordinator of the town, and said, so what's up with this, what do we do, and, or what do we do? And she said, we don't do anything. And I said, okay. And so I talked to Carolyn about it and raised the question if this is something that the transfer station, so the transfer station is, is a contracted, um, it's not really part of the town, it's a contract business that comes in and handles that. So I said, well, this is something that, that could be proposed to them as part of that contract, that they would handle the disposal of that, because at this point we don't, we can collect it, but what do we do, that's gonna pile up. And, um, she said that we could, um, could look into that, so she's, we'll talk, I think, a little bit about that on Friday as well. So much, much to do, um.
So can I ask best about the roof? So the roof and the LEED are all sort of linked together, so if the, the, I guess my first question is, and I don't remember this from the project, is there a statute of limitations on our application for LEED status?
I asked relative to the MBLC or relative to just, to just getting certified?
Relative to the MBLC, to qualify for the grant.
That I don't know, and I haven't, I haven't asked them that. What I have been, and what I did ask though, and I did get an answer, was is there a statute of limitations on getting certified? How long can we be open for, we've already no longer replies to us. And I didn't get an answer to that question, so I don't really know, the clock is running out, and all I know is he's been saying that they have been holding back on their application.
Right, because they want to make sure it's successful.
Right, but I don't have this point of never turn afterwards, you're like, I'm sorry, it's too late.
Because honestly, the only reason we need the LEED certification is to qualify to get the hundred thousand dollars from the MBLC.
Which is a very nice incentive.
It certainly is, right?
Well worth it.
Correct. So, you know, just sort of going through the, you know, the things that we could do to get to LEED certification, right? So if we do the solar panels, it would secure our LEED certification, it would also make us a more sustainable building and save the money, the town money. If we put in the EV charging station, the outlay of money is relatively little, even if we honestly just paid for it directly out of pocket and go through the granting agency, it just takes time, like, it's, you know, that's what I discovered in doing it, it just takes time, time that somebody has to do. It, it should, when I looked at that metric he sent, get a, you know, put us enough comfortably over that edge, um, does it make us any more sustainable or save the town money? No, not really. I mean, the EV charging station, I mean, yes, it's great for the grid, hey, I have an EV now, and sure, I struggle to find things, but because I now have an EV, I also know the best solution is for the entire town to put in the same system to work together, because it's very frustrating to have to download seven different apps in hope that some, you know, it's like if you had to do an entirely different process when you went to the Shell station versus the Exxon station versus the Pride station. And that's kind of where the EV charging landscape is right now. So it, it would be great if some larger entity like the Sustainability Committee or whatever that thing is called, I don't remember the name. So I will make a stab at contacting Jack again and ask him, hey, is there any roadmap for this, just so we know? But for me, I guess what it's all coming down to is, if the roof is what is keeping it, you know, holding us back from actually being able to go out to bid for solar, like, I'm a hundred percent in favor of, look, if the solution that they will accept is to completely replace that section of the roof, I feel like it's not really good for sustainability, but, you know, eventually we wanted to get a metal roof anyway, you know, when this roof eased its lifetime, um, so, anyway, I guess I'm saying anything that we can do to do the, the right thing and any way we can impress upon, you know, the town that this is, was gonna save you money. I mean, I know we've tried, but.
Well, the, even.
The clock is ticking.
The clock is ticking.
So can we find out if the clock is ticking, so that we can say to them, the clock is ticking, we need to do X, Y, and Z by, by this?
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll ask that question again.
And I, I can also let Jack know, since Jack was part of the library building process, that, you know, the, the LEED certification is potentially in jeopardy if we don't do one of two things. Can you help us be the solution for the, you know, for an EV charging station? Cause we want to have a unified solution for the town. Which is the best for the town, not just us trying to do our.
We're trying to save a hundred thousand dollars for it.
Yeah, even if we had to spend more money to put a section of metal roof up there, it's going to be less than a hundred thousand.
Correct.
And so you still have.
Well, that's, that's worst case scenario, hopefully we're only having to put up, you know, something on a section to protect.
And, and here it is.
Right, but just, I'm just saying, worst case scenario, it is still beneficial to the town to do something. If there are intermediate steps that can be taken that are even more beneficial, then we should proceed with it.
Yeah, we did, we did get a quote though for metal, for, we know what it's gonna cost to do that, and it was more than, if I remember correctly, more than two hundred thousand dollars, so that, that's.
For just that section?
For all the lower sections, for, because it applies to all of the lower roofs, not just the ones that we put solar on, anything that water is coming off of from a high roof to a low roof is what we're talking about.
I thought they were only questioning two of those sections.
I don't believe so, I thought it was any, any of them, so. And at that point, if you were just, if you were replacing just two sections, it would look really weird to have like some lower roofs with shingles and then these two roofs look, not all that, that's a static choice.
Moving on.
Yeah, moving on, um. Donor wall, we are, I am back in touch with Dan. Personally returned my phone call today, they're apparently moving to a new facility or renovating their, their workspace, and so he is behind, but he is working on the wooden bookspines. I don't know when that's going to arrive, but he does, he did say that it is in process, he did confirm that he got all of the orders for slate plaques, and he will be fabricating those, including one for the, um, local history room, which will list all of the, um, all the individual donors to that, because there were something like, you know, thirty or forty that contributed, contributed to that project, it's gonna be a little time, it says all of those people's names. And then this is one that I was going to, actually was gonna ask Alan, but he's no longer with us to, to, to do this, uh, but the friends that have the preschool are looking to use this room on, at nine o'clock on Saturday mornings. Staff, um, I put it out there, if staff, any of the staff for Saturdays were willing to come in an hour early to let them in, that would be great. We're gonna maybe have a staff person doing that once, Karen can't do it, and then I'll just maybe leaving, so that leaves us without someone to do it. I can tell them that we can't do it, but I would really like to accommodate them, this is something that they would be able to do if we had the access hardware for the, for the room. And so this is just a bunch of families with young children coming in and using the space for like a, you know, for a plate group. and using the space for like a, you know, for a plate group on Saturday mornings. So I'm wondering if there's anyone, any trustee who has a key who would be willing to meet that group on Saturdays for, for the short term, after January, on Saturday mornings, to just let this group in, and then the regular staff will show up more like 9:30.
I could do that.
You would be willing to do that? That would be really great.
As far as, you have a kind of like, just let one of us know.
Okay, I could do it on, I could do it occasionally. I couldn't commit to doing it every Saturday, but...
This is once a month.
But I could be...
It's once a month.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, if once a month, you need backup, you've got a couple of...
I mean, even if we just...
It's every, every...
No, sorry.
Even if we just took turns...
Yeah.
As of February, a lot...
Is that upcoming, like...
It's not, it's not coming until, they would not need someone to help them out with that until February. I guess August will be here, I think, till then, and on, on the January date. And they already met this month and started at 10:00. But they asked if they could move it earlier, and I said, I would try.
And it's the first Saturday?
It's the second Saturday. So I'm not sure what that would be. That's all, that's all.
Well, then can revisit it in January?
Sure.
To make sure that everything is lined up. I will just say that I'm excited about the oversized shelf because I have been pulling and labeling all of the books that are going to go on.
Thank you, Lynn. Somebody had to do it.
Did you say that's nine?
That we're not?
No.
Oh, not yet, not yet.
Oh, Patrick, did you want to just briefly mention custodial services?
Uh, what can I say about custodial services? We did request an additional, that custodial services be upgraded? Is that what you're referring to? I did request through Carolyn, because it has been, it actually has been noted by Carolyn that sometimes when she has been here for meetings that involve other departments, she has kind of said, well, how often do you get clean? And I'm like, two days a week. So she agrees that this is something that should be revisited, and they're hoping to expand the cleaning schedule. I don't know whether it'll be to three days, four days, I don't know what it is. But we could definitely use more thinking when we're having, you know, 100 plus people in here, sometimes 150 people a day. That's two, two days a week is not enough.
I'm surprised to hear it's not...
Susan?
Yes. What was the rule C have to say? On November 15th, I attended a Zoom meeting for CLB. Maybe the names will mean something too, that I don't think to me. It was hosted by Mara Didi and Rob Trevini. And the topic was meeting rooms and libraries and what are the hot topics and what to do about it. The gist of it was things like, who do you let use a public library community roof? And do you have rules and regulations about who can and who cannot? And who decides who can and cannot? What does the law say about you making decisions about who can and cannot? And what happens when some people protest that some people are using it for their own random activism and other people eject to it? And, you know, the whole freedom of speech. And the whole Zoom meeting, which seemed to be statewide, different representatives of libraries across the state came in. And I did feel like it sort of became a college philosophy class of situational ethics. You know, it had no answers. Well, what if, yeah, but then what if, but then what if? And the people from MBLA really had no answers. They said, you know, that the law is pretty vague. You know, it doesn't really commit to anything. And so libraries are kind of writing their own rules. And they gave some examples and references of different communities who wrote things. She was saying that Mass General Law, in one of their policies of public libraries, uses the word "should." You should make such facilities available. It should be equitable, viewpoint neutral, but it doesn't say you have to. So really vague wording. They noted Forbes Library Policy, who can use it? Haverhill Public Library. People talked about meeting rooms versus study rooms and making a distinction between that and that helps distinguish what you can do. What if you get someone who comes in who is part of a hate speech organization? I mean, they went into all of the what ifs, what if, you know? And there's, my impression of the whole thing was there's really no, there's no legislation. There's no clear answers. People are just doing what they can do. They talked about public library calendars. What do, what responsibility does a public library have for the calendar? Is everything listed on the calendar? So if you've signed out a room and you have this extreme political view, it doesn't get listed on the public calendar? Or is the public calendar, is the library calendar only for things that the library specifically is sponsoring?
That's actually a point that, sorry to interrupt, but that's actually a point that I think in the policy, this is not something we've implemented and probably should revisit. We have not been, we don't post, nor do I think we should post, you know, an event. If someone observes the room for, you know, Bob's 80th birthday party, which is something that happened, they, you know, want to have a get-together. But why would we, why would we list that on the calendar? I mean, that's a different thing than a library program or what have you. The policy says that events will be listed on the calendar. And I'm not really sure why we made that decision. But it probably should be revisited because it seems, you know, like an odd thing. Because that implies that, that Bob's birthday party is something that you might want to... Even though it would be not invited.
It implies something of publicness, but also...
Right.
It doesn't, yeah, it kind of implies an endorsement too, so...
So I think really only our events calendar, I mean, I think that the calendar itself, if someone came up and said, I'd like to see what's on your meeting room calendar. I don't see why that isn't public information. I might just show it to them, but that's not the same thing as like posting it to information or if you're able to look at a website or what have you. So...
I would think a lot of groups using this room wouldn't want their event publicized in that way too. I mean, some would and some wouldn't.
Right, well, sometimes, somehow, I mean, you know, if it's say the Girl Scouts...
But it's their responsibility to talk here, you know, hey, come to the Girl Scouts. Right, but it is their responsibility to do the publicity. It is not our obligation.
Exactly, which is, yeah, and that's something we want to avoid. We want to avoid the expectation that we're here to run that, we're not.
So it's enough to say that the room is available or it is otherwise engaged.
Right.
But it is something to keep in mind if and when we get our, you know, door system so that folks can, you know, access the room after hours and then will, you know, in theory, have a, you know, electronic calendaring system or whatever. Like, you know, is the town's intention that anything on that calendar would automatically go on to the larger calendar? Like, I don't know, just something to keep in mind that we need to remember to ask, think about time.
And these were the things that they were debating, yeah. I mean, if it's a town facility, then is it public knowledge? You know, does it go on a general calendar or doesn't it? Do you charge fees or do you not? And who do you charge fees to and who do you not charge fees to? And who decides that? And what's the legality behind all that? So it was a lot of this. It was a lot of really good questions, but there were no firm answers on anything. Can you write a policy that's for residents only? If it's a Hadley Public Library, is the policy only for Hadley citizens? Or is because it's a public library, it's for anyone? So a lot of debatable questions.
And were there any, like, actual libraries that were there to say, this has been our experience, this has worked really well? Or was it more of a model theory?
Both. So there were libraries that said, we did X, Y, Z, and it worked out really well. And then someone almost always had a counterpoint. Well, we tried the same thing, and then this happened, and we're not going to do that again, you know? And so I was left with the feeling that, you know, like, life is nowadays, there's a lot of big questions and not a lot of answers to big questions. And that towns are kind of just doing what they're doing in the moment until it really gets challenged, and then they're mending it. And then sort of that squeaky wheel idea of how things happen, you know, that one person just yells and yells and yells and yells about it. And so we make policy changes or adjustments. It was interesting, but I didn't come away with any answers.
Probably frustrated with the fact that it was so vague.
Yeah, I didn't really know what to expect. Now, this is all new for me, this point forward into all of this. So it was, it was interesting, certainly much more complex than it's the eye to the average person who has no background in any of all of these questions or interviews.
Thanks for going to that.
It was interesting.
I hope you weren't getting the needle pointed while you were doing it. Smith's public recognition update. I have permission to borrow three small quilts that Char Smith constructed. I think the day that that was confirmed is either within 48 hours of when this artist's work was hung. So that sort of kind of complicated matters. So I think this is probably not going to happen perhaps until February. But it will happen, and we will have visual aid to go with it. And I'll work with Patrick to come up with a press release for the time that we do have this little exhibit. So that is the extent of that. Or you have the Friends done anything interesting?
Not really, no.
Okay.
You know, well, I mean, they, they're doing different things with the books.
What was the last, last, I can't remember the last meeting. The last two meetings, Jeremy and I have not been present. And so that we've been a little bit derailed in our, in whatever the agenda would have been. That was, that was the meeting that we met in, we met in the history room, yeah. The last meeting, we, the library requested that the Friends support our film license, our local film license to allow us to publicly show films here. And so we were actually playing the first film. I do remember last year, we did like a whole series of films. We're being a little less ambitious this time. I think we hoped that the Friends would also sort of step in and support, you know, doing like a vending thing to raise money for the Friends, just like popcorn and, you know, drinks and some candies and stuff. At this moment, it doesn't feel like that is going to happen right now, but it's an opportunity, I think, in the future for the Friends, especially if they're paying for that license and they have ownership of it. So we'll see if they're not, that's for now. But the bookroom is going well. I mean, we're having a lot of people coming in and enjoying browsing there. People come out and putting their money in the little can.
And it seems like there's little collections that are coming in that...
Of donations.
Yeah.
The stuff is always, yeah, the stuff is always coming in. It always, always has and always will. But yeah, it was a quiet...
It was pretty short and sweet. That's fine. Okay. Marina Jessica, do you want to start the conversation about the director of evaluations?
I thought we were almost ready to go.
Do you, do you want to just sort of review, like, what you, what you've sent? So we have some recommendations, I guess, to share. Yeah, so we compiled the overall score. Do I say it or...
No, we all have it in front of us.
Oh, okay.
Speak to the document, yes, but don't read it to us.
Oh, all right.
Wait, do I have this? I probably have. You sent me the one with the staff one, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think I have, I've given this to you.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
You do it too?
No.
I didn't print out a copy or give it to you? No, 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 for Patrick, I can see it.
Nothing's up.
I'm sorry, I'm new. I'm not new, but... So we, we got the different numbers. We got the staff overview, trustee comments on all the different sections. And our goals are, we'd like to see more evaluations done, or evaluations done at the staff.
Which, which at this point hasn't been done.
Good, because we're halfway through this, it's like a year from this evaluation. It's just a bizarre, like, leap in time. Yeah. So checkmark?
I think one of the things that we, I mean, one of the major hindrances in this process is that we made big changes to the process, and then I had to dip out for two months. And so I think that there was more that we would have liked to have been able to do in this process that just wasn't possible. And so I think one of the things that, that struck us was when we averaged out the numbers, they didn't compare to last year's. And we changed the form this year. And so that, to me, seems problematic because the comments were not, you know, negative. There was nothing in the comments that indicated a change from last year's numbers to this year's numbers. And that's something that we wanted to be able to look at and say, what's going on here with the process that's causing this? But we're now down to the wire. We looked through all the comments, and they are generally quite positive. It just, it worked out that the overall average was lower than last year. We, and so that just feels like there was a, there was something with the process or with the revised form that we used that we might have had an opportunity to discuss and troubleshoot if I were, if half of the committee were actually present to do that work this fall. So I think that's one of the conundrums that we have. I think that we got, between, between the comments that we got from trustees, the comments from staff, which also was another area that we would have liked to have probed a little further. And, you know, and a review of Patrick's self-evaluation, which brought up a number of ways in which this year had... which brought up a number of ways in which this year had a lot of big things, a lot of challenges that he, you know, addressed very, very well. We don't feel that the, the, just sort of mechanical averaging of the numbers really seems to represent what we see in that whole package.
I would just perhaps offer the observation that one-third of the board is new.
Yeah.
And so they don't have the full range of experience. And in the context of doing this evaluation within the framework of a fiscal year, and theoretically not incorporating experiences or knowledge outside of that, I found that to be quite challenging.
Yeah.
And it was difficult to feel that I had anything substantive to contribute, despite the fact that I've known Patrick for several years in other contexts. But that's, it's not appropriate to bring that into this. So I think that also, I don't know that that had tremendous effect on the numbers and averages, but I'm sure that that limited the quality and substance of the comments so that you don't have as much to work with.
Also, I think adds to a sense, you know, this was my first year actually completing the evaluation because the previous year I didn't have the experience to do so. So, so in terms of sort of having a consistent, a consistency, I think that's, that's a huge challenge at this time.
So I'll just say that I looked at the numbers and, you know, I know that you guys had mentioned that in, you know, in your summary. I didn't even worry about comparing last year's to this year's. I just said, oh, you guys want us to come up with some goals? So, you know, I'm looking at all these averages across these things. I don't see a problem, like, I don't see a problem in any of the areas. But if I had to come up with some goals, let's make it that, some goals in some of the areas that were maybe not as, you know, all good, but less good, right? So like, I'll take personnel, for example, right? So one of the things the staff had said, and that was maybe that, you know, one of the lower areas wanting to have evaluations on a yearly basis. So I didn't even, Patrick didn't pay me to say this. I didn't know he was in the process of doing these annual. But that, that to me should be a goal for Patrick for next year, right? It just happens that he's done it, doesn't really matter. But I feel like that should be a goal because it fits with, you know, sort of what we're seeing here in terms of metrics and what the staff reported. And it's good, it's good for the staff, it's good for Patrick.
Well, it's actually a goal, it was actually a goal that was put forward at the last evaluation. And it was just that it was, because of everything that was going on, it was, I was slow to actually implement it. And so it took a little longer to do that. But, you know, it did, it did get done ultimately, and it's now going to become an ongoing, you know, you're, well, it's not a goal, it's just like part of like to do this for a year. It's not like something new.
We're responsible, yeah.
And we're doing it. So, yeah.
You know, I think, I think that was also a goal that I sort of proposed. So yay, that it's already in place. I think, like, one of the things that struck me in looking through the comments from trustees, I'm just trying to pull this document up, was that there were, there were just really positive comments in all of the sections. And so it was not easy to look through this and say, like, oh, here's some obvious goals. You know, in terms of administration, the amount of administrative work in, you know, this much busier library and with all of the new, you know, with all of the kind of physical plant issues, you know, lots of applause in here for that. The budget one, it was like, yep, that's going well. Like, we get the numbers, we see them. You're advocating for things that are important. Personnel, these are just the, the general categories. So personnel, there's, I think we've already, we've already discussed that one. Planning and policy, I think we've looked at some new policies this year, and those brought, were brought to us. And there was, you know, they were well thought out and researched. Our feedback was taken into account, and the policies are in place. Outreach and coordination, I think that there's, again, sort of positive comments here about the way that you show up. You know, town committees, the sort of larger presence that the library has in the community. So, you know, I think there's, there's, there's a lot of, like, really great work that, that happened here in whatever year this is, twenty twenty-one, whatever, that we, you know, that this documents. So that aspect of it is great. It just, it struck me like, oh, well, why is the number, why does the number average out to be? It's not like dramatically lower, but it just seemed odd. Like, there wasn't a calibration that I think we wanted it to have, so. So this comes back to the recommendations for a raise and, and the issue of the amendment you wanted to make to the, to the budget. I'm also wondering if there are other goals that trustees have identified that you kind of are already kind of working on that we haven't discussed. I think one of the things that I'm thinking about in that respect is, as I'm kind of getting back on my feet, I do want to take on the project that we discussed a few months ago of creating community input on kind of how are we doing, what are the needs? And so, you know, there, there may be a goal there around sort of participating in that and, you know, in developing, you know, a plan or programs or staffing increases or whatever recommendations in response to, to that. But I'm wondering what other, if there's other goals maybe to start?
Well, I, I mean, so I, I, the way I think about this is that, and I think we talked about, a little bit about this when we met, when Morgan and you and I all met, when we were talking about this process. But I, I have been fortunate in this job in the sense that when I started it, I came in at the time when we were beginning to do the work of, you know, the planning and design process. I came right at the beginning, we had just gotten that grant. And so my, the way I interpret what my role here is in essence to be implementing the vision of the trustees. That doesn't mean that I don't think independently of the trustees and that I don't devise things on my own based on what I see in, in the library. But in a way, you know, I've always seen like that, that kind of goal making as, as a collaborative and organizational thing. Because if the trustees are, you know, united and saying, or, you know, all agree that there are some things that we should be working on, then I show up to work and I know what some of my day is going to be occupied with. So I've, I've said that in the past, that I, I'm hoping that now that we're in this building, that we can start to think about, because it's not so clear cut now. It's not like go to work, build the library, you know, and then do other management things. It's more like we're here, and what are we going to do with the space? And so there are a lot of opportunities. This is a different environment. It's dynamic, and it's changing all the time. So to me, my, my goal, I mean, I have lots of things, again, that I will continue to work on by, you know, organizing the local history room, getting, you know, things digitized and available, so they go online. It's a long-term, you know, projects and things like that. But I, I feel like we need to have an opportunity to talk as a group because the group is in flux. And, you know, opinions are going to change about what's important and what, you know, where the emphasis should be. But in order for me to really feel like I am doing the job that the trustees would like me to be doing and not running counter to it or disrupting it, I, we kind of need to have like that larger vision thing. So I'm hoping that there will be more of that so that it's not just sort of a, you know, because the goals thing just seems kind of squishy. Like, I mean, there's so much to do. I could work, you know, eighty hours a week. I don't want to work eighty, eighty hours a week. But, you know, if you could just sort of like work until you drop because there are certain things to be done in any given week. So, you know, the goal making is good, but I feel like it really needs to be in the context of like, what are we about as an organization? Where are we trying to go? So that I can then go my business off of. But I'm happy to hear any specific, you know, things related to this, to this evaluation that actually turn my attention to, I'm happy to strive to improve. But in, at the end of the day, I feel like this, you know, this process, it's due diligence, it's, but at the end of the day, it's, it's going to be someone making a motion to say, yes, you did your job, and here's the recommendation. You should give a X or Y. So, sorry, I'm kind of just going off. But that's how I feel about the process.
So it strikes me, and I think one of the things that I heard you say there at the end is like thinking about, well, one, like, goals that are tied to the vision of the trustees, right? But I think also to speak to the eighty hours a week thing, which is very real, not thinking of this as like a task list to add to an already existing task list, but as a, a way to guide priorities.
Yep.
And like, it, it's a two-way street, right? So I don't necessarily think your job is just to carry out our vision, right? I think you represent the staff, you represent yourself, right? So part of our job is to, you know, quote-unquote, supervise you, right? But that includes, like, hearing where do you want to go as a library director? What is your vision for a, you know, 21st century library? What does that look like to you now that you have had the time to, to think? You know, you've had a full year to live in this space, to really think about this and reflect upon that. Like, for me, I feel like I also have spent these multiple years trying to build this library and haven't really taken the time to think, oh, like, what do we have? I still are thinking, what still needs to get done? You know, which I, I, I'd like to get away from thinking that way. I hope that you can get away from thinking that way. Like, I am genuinely interested in what our talented library director, you know, sees for the library and, and really for yourself, right? So if this were my workplace and you were my employer and I didn't have a whole, it was just the two of us, I'm your supervisor, I would say, okay, you know, we've had this big job, we just got through this. Now, what, what would you like to focus on? Like, where do you want to go? And how can I help you get there, right? So, I mean, that's kind of what I'm interested in hearing. You know, not just what our vision is, but what, what do you want to do? If you had, you know, five extra hours of every week that you could be freed up from something, what would you choose to focus on? You know, are you interested in digitization and making a beautiful digital website of all our resources? Are you interested in local history? What do you, what do you feel passionate about? What do you feel like the library of the 21st century needs that maybe we don't have and you'd like to get us there?
Is that, is that an actual question that you're...
It is. I mean, I didn't answer it today, but I'm just sort of putting it out there.
Right. I mean, and it's a very long, I mean, there are so many things that we can, that we can focus on. And, you know, the potential of the library really is, in my mind, is less about, you know, what we as staff create. This is limited to what we can do. There's only like five of us on staff, and it's only so many hours in the day. It's really unleashing the potential of the community to make use of the space in all of the ways that it can be made use of. So we've already had in the last year, we've had, you know, a dance performance, like an ongoing series of dance performances in the, in the main hall that happened like after we closed the library. And then, you know, the space was used in, in, in ways that you wouldn't necessarily think were consistent with the, you know, the mission of a library. And yet, there you are. Someone came to us, I knew we didn't dream about it. Someone came to us and said, I really love the space. I would like to do this performance. And, you know, I see it as my job to weigh that and say, yes, as much as possible, yes, to the community to come in and do more and more things of all kinds here. And that, that is a logistical challenge. It, you know, it takes time and it is a, and it's... So we can't say yes to everything, but as much as possible, I want the, you know, the community to feel like they can come to, to us, sit down and say, I have an idea. Can we do this in the space? We've got, you know, we have music in the space now, at least a couple of times. You know, art being displayed. So, so to me, it really is about that, of making it more available to the community to make sure people know that this is a space that they can take advantage of and use. But as well, you know, I did mention the, the effort to kind of have the library be at the center of the, the kind of cataloging of local history artifacts and resources so that people can, rather than having to go to multiple, you know, silos that may or may not be well documented or, or accessible, to be able to see some, see into those spaces, to see, you know, digitized maps or photos or, you know, things that we don't sort of know because we don't have the room to have all those things. But we can certainly make them available on, on a, on the town website or through the, you know, the Internet archive or whoever it is that, that is the, you know, repository for that sort of thing. That Boston Public Library does a lot of digitizing. We're on the waiting list to have some of that work done. In the meantime, it would be, you know, talk to some people, but there's, there's more to do in terms of identifying where stuff is, where is all this buried treasure that we should be preserving and making available? So that's something that I feel very strongly about, but it's a time-consuming process to, to do that work. But yeah, I mean, there are a number of things like that. There, there are ambitions that the staff have to do things like community reads and, and things like that. Again, it's a challenge to, to find the time and the bandwidth to do it. But those are things that, that people want to do. I'd like to set them just to, to do those things. So, I don't know. The sky's the limit, really, but it's just a matter of how to get it all done.
And we can't get it all done, you know, with the limited time that, you know, the staff is here. But, you know, just tossing out there that maybe next time, you know, if you could pick one of those things, what, what does that look like? What does doing that look like, right? So, you know, the local history, for example, you know, what would it take to move the needle to where you thought is possible in one year, right? Would that require money? Would that require, you know, a little group of foot soldiers that would be volunteers that would help with some of this stuff? Does it involve the schools? Does it involve Poderfels? What, like, what, what does it involve? Like, tell us what you think that would take and, and how you can...
At this point, the impediments are external to us. They're, they're the logjam that is, I guess, possibly created by COVID institutionally where Boston Public Library can't take a lot of stuff. It's really a matter of feeding them the stuff and they're sort of active that they, that they can't do it. They do the work, this is a great opportunity. And it'll cost to us, you know, they get material, they digitize it. We provide some metadata, but then it goes up and it becomes available. With very little effort from us, it's just that they are, they're slammed and can't get it done. But...
Well, so then, as I would say to my employees, then don't make a goal that you are not personally able to, to do, right? If it's relying on someone else's work.
Absolutely. But if someone, they're going to call me on the phone and say, yes, when can you have some, get some stuff to us? And I, at that point, I will be, you know, changing gears and picking that up and getting it to them because I don't want to wait another year.
Right. So, and I think that's great, like, make sure that we know that. And, you know, as I also say to my employees, in case I, with a lottery, or get hit by a bus, the person that then sits in my seat and picks up all of your files and says, well, you're supposed to have, to do this by then, why isn't this done, right? Like, don't set it up for yourself, set yourself up for success. And that should be part of our job, is to, you know, sort of duly noted. This is what you've already put in for this help. And if Boston Public Library calls you up today, you're going to need to pivot to do that, right? So you might have that as a goal, but you also, you know, we all know, need to know that might not be achievable, but that might not be your fault.
Yes, but there is work that can be accomplished that is, that is down to us, which is, you know, kind of doing that survey work of figuring out what exists. You know, talking to different organizations and saying, are you partnering on this? Is this something that you want to pursue? Or, no, no, we, we don't want to do that. But that's something that, you know, that's a conversation that I have started and will continue. continuing to have with other, you know, groups that I haven't talked to yet. So that, that's work that can be done in advance. I just can't do the promising to them because a lot of this is based on external circumstances.
Yeah.
How could we start a conversation, discover what's out there and what's, you know, what's endangered? Because the clock is ticking on some of these items, you know, the vault in, which I've never been in, but I've heard of the, the vault in the basement of Town Hall, which is full of, you know, moldering documents that are not really well preserved. So maybe there are things down there that should be, you know, digitized and accessible as well. But it needs to be seen. So that's, that's something.
And I would encourage you to say the same thing to your, you know, staff that you know are going to be here, you know, especially your, you know, I'll, I'll call it your full-time staff, right? I know that maybe it's really called reporters or whatever, but if they could each pick one thing, what would that be and what would it take to get there, right? Does this take professional development funds or, again, a bunch of foot soldiers to help them operationalize the community read or whatever it is, right? So I think if each one of you has, you know, a goal that's working, you know, towards something that you're each passionate about, it's going to make the library better and ideally it will make your own lives here at the library, you know, be more enjoyable and that's, you know, that's better for everyone. So, like, I, I would love to see that. I would love to, like, actually hear what those things were. If you could pick just one and your staff members, if they could pick just one.
We can work on, on doing that. That's a conversation that, that I will have going forward. I mean, we do, we do have that, I mean, they have, as I said, like, community reads thing is something that Sue feels strongly about, you know, we've identified a source of funding to help to do that, friends are, are in support of it. And we actually did have an event planned that then fell through because the author became unavailable due to family circumstances. So then we had to identify a new author and sort of start from scratch to, to get it done. So, you know, it's, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing process and it's not, it was, so, so, but that's, that's definitely something that, that I can talk to them about and have them articulate those things and I can report those back.
I think it would be helpful once we are able to solicit comments from the public and take that as direction for the trustees to provide leadership and to facilitate by whatever means the ability to achieve those ends. And I think Allison's point about the direction cannot come entirely from us.
Oh, no.
Because we don't have the expertise, we don't necessarily interact with the patrons. So that whatever comes from, quote, top down, there also needs to be whatever bubbling.
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll say champagne bubbles, maybe not swab bubbles.
I'm not trying to advocate that, that responsibility, but I'm saying that as an organization, there, there has been a great deal of, a sense of mission amongst the trustees, particularly because of the, the circumstances. And I just feel like that the, this group has traditionally been a very strong group with a lot of ideas. And so it is helpful to have that as an organization, you know, to have like a brain trust that's not just like, well, what are you doing and how are you doing it? But what, you know, what is, this group represents the community, what does the community want, you know, and, and we'll try to do it. So, you know, when ideas come through, we try to figure out how, how they can be implemented and what we can do. I'm just saying it's a two-way street.
Oh, yes, I am agreeing. That's all.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
I agree entirely. I think a website would help let people know what we are doing and give them ideas about what maybe they could do, but we're working on it.
Working on it.
We're working on it.
Jessica, anything else or are we at a point of making a recommendation?
Well, one of the questions that Maureen and I were talking about is, is part of this process is in terms of making a recommendation for a raise, this is why I was looking at the social security numbers, you know, that what we've recommended as a board in the past would be like nothing in comparison to inflation. And so a point of clarification for me, are we making a recommendation for, for a salary increase that is on top of whatever the town cost of living increase is or that is just the only increase? So that's, that's what I don't quite understand in terms of our charge here.
In general, what's happened in the past is we have this sort of assume, we don't know what's going to happen at the town front. It might be zero, depending on what the budget looks like, what, it might be whatever percent that they decide. And that's really like the cost of living adjustment. That's like basically, and so what, what we have done is saying, well, what should Patrick's raise be? Like, what is this merit raise, right? Just to use sort of union terms for this, not the word union shop, but, so we have typically looked at this as, this is one part of the potential increase in Patrick's salary with the other increase coming along with the rest of the, right? I mean?
Yeah, if, if the town gave a rented, a COLA raise, I would see it just like any other, so it's just an adjustment to every salary in town, separate from this consideration.
Yeah. So if, for example, we voted to give him a, you know, a two percent increase and then the town voted a two percent COLA, we don't then rescind our two percent and say, okay, you've got that two percent, that's it? It would then become four percent.
Okay. That's helpful because I was concerned if we, who recommended a two percent raise and then the town said four percent and then it was in place of, so it's in addition to.
I, I don't think I knew what we gave last year.
Do you remember? Right. This is the consistency thing, is that we were just like, what's wrong with the number?
I actually can't remember. I, I, I'm not going to say it because I can't, I can't remember for sure. I think it was two percent.
I should have looked it up. I should have looked it up. I don't.
I want to say it's two and a half, also two and a half.
What is?
COLA.
No, I think, I thought the question was, is that what the question was?
The merit raise.
Just by my raise as a contract.
I apologize.
Well, that's okay. We were asking that question earlier as well. What was the COLA raise last year?
Gotcha.
Yeah. So that was, that was the answer to a different question that we also have.
Well, I think the number that we had talked about was three percent, but it was kind of just a step in the dark.
Yeah, right.
Because we wanted to recognize the sort of increased, like, responsibilities and challenges and sort of levels of projects, given that the library is open and bustling and flourishing, our overall satisfaction, performance and, but again, like.
Any other comments?
Because we don't have the history of what those percentages have been. To me, it just feels random to say, to say three percent, but.
I think those raises in, in the past have been in a range from two to five percent across time. I can't tell you what it averages out to as of year over year, but that's what it's been. Yeah. Or what it had. And actually, I think there was a year when I didn't get one because the town was burnt or something.
I think that was reasonable.
Yes, and I think that was before we had this approach to it, and I think that was one of the things we didn't realize, that if, if Patrick just had the same evaluation, et cetera, then he would, his fortunes would rise and fall only with whatever the town decided to do. And we, you know, and we knew that there were some other sort of director level positions that had separate contracts, et cetera. And so that's just like for some history, that's when we said, hey, this is more appropriate because we actually hire Patrick. So the contract is in some ways, you know, with us to decide. So we kind of wanted to make sure it didn't happen again. I mean, obviously, we can make any recommendation that we want and the town could reject it, right? So if, I just did the liberty of running numbers ahead of time. So if we, if we did, went ahead with that proposed increase of youth services coordinator rate to sixteen dollars an hour, that would add an additional five hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty cents to that hundred seventy-five nine forty. And then in addition, a three percent raise, we'd be adding an additional two thousand sixty-two dollars and twenty-six cents, right? So all told, you know, it's roughly twenty-five hundred dollars on top of the one seventy-five, right? So again, we make our recommendations, we justify them, and then in the end, the town could still, you know, reject it and then Patrick would just get whatever COLA increase the town had. So. Would they reject it entirely or would they, is that they're all enough of a thing?
This is the, this is the way that it's been set out there. Those are separate lines, my salary is separate from the staff line. So they, they, the town administrator can make any recommendation on, on any of those individual lines and say, you know, this is, this line is capped at, you know, this number of dollars. So she, she can make her own recommendation. We'll tip it up before it goes to the slide or the finance committee.
It, it's gone pretty smoothly. I mean, I, we haven't gotten a lot of pushback because as Patrick pointed out, we generally are pretty conservative with the things that we're asking for and, you know.
I was trying to understand if the town administrator said it was beyond the town's ability to pay, would we then have the opportunity to revisit that within some sort of timeframe and financial parameters to make an adjustment? Or is it, no, this is too much, you don't get any of it? Or is it the town administrator, just to be outrageous, if we said that we wanted to give you a nine percent increase and the town administrator said that is too much, we can't afford it, it is out of alignment with any and everybody else, would you then not get any percentage or would she say everyone else is getting two, so you get two?
This is, this is ultimately, I mean, as it says, this is, this would be her recommendation to the finance committee. So, you know, the trustees could also make, and, and probably will be asked to make a justification for why this number, as opposed to some other number.
Okay.
And she will say why she thinks it's, it's.
Okay. Now I understand.
The trustees will make their own argument.
Correct. She would say something to the effect of, I'm getting pushed back on this line item from the finance committee. The finance committee would be the one that ultimately decides. So they may ask us to come, why is it a three percent increase? This seems like a lot, blah, blah, blah. We were going to recommend one and a half percents.
No, I understand now. I just was trying to, I have not been privy to that sausage we gave before.
Whether it was all or none.
Right, that's, I didn't understand if there was an opportunity to appeal or any recourse.
I think you could always.
Yeah, that's fine. I understand.
The town administrator, but because they don't really actually start to review these things until, if I recall, I don't think they would start to actively, you know, review them and have hearings, the finance committee, until, you know, later in the spring. So, you know, if they're, hopefully they're going to review them quickly and give feedback and if there needs to be course correction, they would, they would be telling us. I, I hope, I just, I don't have a lot of experience, you know, as far as this goes with, with Carolyn and her position because she's only been doing it for a couple of years. So I just, this is, even now, things are different than the way they used to be as far as, you know, sequencing and that's.
But do you know whether the town is healthy or, you know, like in terms of revenue and?
Oh, health, did you say healthy?
Healthy, yeah.
I, I don't know relative to what, I have not heard people, you know, saying, doing things as I've heard in some other years, so I don't, I'm not really sure.
I didn't know if it's like the pot shops, like, things are fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I didn't know if it's pot shops helped. Right. There's that, the hotel occupancy thing.
Yeah.
The tax. The evaluations are going up.
Yeah. So I will make a motion to adjust the staff salary line from one seventy-five nine forty and fifty-eight cents to one seventy-eight five twenty-six.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I can give you this paper.
Okay.
Dot four-four. This would reflect the increase of the youth services coordinator position to sixteen dollars an hour and a raise of Patrick of three percent, which would bring his salary to seventy thousand eight hundred and four and twenty-six cents.
Is there any further discussion? Here in the night, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say yes, because that doesn't see that you raised your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm just going to pass this. Thank you, Patrick. Can I just give this to Jessica?
Do we draft it something?
Yes, it probably should be a, it probably should see something sent to human resources and Karen, so that the bill was paid.
This is the addition of the youth services.
Not that it will be implemented or going to the budget, just so that they know.
This is a total.
Yes, so on such and such day, the trustees approved, do I tell them a three percent raise or?
Yeah, I would, I, and I would confirm it with, so la, last year, something that actually just happened a week ago was I got an email from Joan saying that when the calculation for, for the increase for last year went into effect, it was calculated wrong. I don't know by who, but they were, my total salary was like five hundred dollars less than what it should have been based on what percentage was voted. And I don't know how that ever happened, but really the HR people should like, I was saying that there should be a note sent to human resources and the town administrator. The administrator's saying, this bill was taken, it's three percent. And then let Joan take the number and then do it and then, you know, because then again, it's going to be, you know, depending on this all passing and everything else, but she can take that on board and say, this would be the number when the time comes and make sure.
I called her and I said, hey, can you tell?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's what precipitated it. Yeah, she called me.
Can you tell me what the percentage was last, last year for Patrick's raise? And, you know, I could hear her, her calculating. And then, and she's like, oh! And she's like, um, that's not right. And so, so she's like, I'll have to go to human resource and I'll give you a call back.
Well, when I got the email that afternoon, I had, I had like, I read it really quickly because I was like getting up and it popped in the inbox and I was reading and I was like, oh no, it was like, I thought I owed the town.
Oh, no, that would be their error.
I played that game with the social securities, thank you very much.
Who won?
I had to send them a, no, I had, I paid by credit card.
Oh, so they overpaid you and you had to pay them back?
Yes.
Oh, God, that's grim.
Yes. Yes.
So.
I would suggest perhaps that not only include the percentage, but in brackets, what you calculated that percentage dollar amount to be for a total of, so they can check the math and we can make sure that everybody is, is using the same system.
Yeah, definitely check my math because you can see I just scribbled it on the page.
I don't imagine I'm going to do the math better than you did.
Is there anything else?
Linda, she did.
We need to cover. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Second.